wants renters to know their rights. All this and more up next on this week's City Beat.
Councilmember Karen Price will present a livestream called, "Renters' Rights and Eviction Protections During the COVID-19 Crisis." The Facebook livestream plans to address the most common questions from tenants regarding rent. Due to the pandemic, many are suffering from issues such as loss of work, and renters deserve answers about their living accommodations. The Renters' Rights livestream will be done in collaboration with the L.A. Housing and Community Investment Department. The pandemic is causing layoffs, furloughs, and reduced hours of work all across Southern California. So, Councilmember Mitchell Farrell is helping deliver answers about unemployment benefits. He has joined forces with the city's Economic and Workforce Development Department's Rapid Response Team for a free virtual orientation. This free information session will provide details on how to access unemployment services and resources as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. Stress is high during these times, so know your unemployment rights and let the city help you. L.A. will begin using local restaurants to provide food for its emergency senior meal program. The program will provide people who are 65 and older, who have low incomes, with 10 meals per week. Their services will be handled by taxi drivers, giving them and restaurants the help they could use. The city had recently expanded the senior meal program from 5,000 people to 12,000 people.
Call us, because odds are if you live alone or with a partner alone, you'll qualify. It's not for 100% of seniors. You have to be under a certain income amount, but it's 600% of the federal poverty level. So, there are a lot of folks that will qualify.
The iconic Amoeba Music, the world's largest independent record store, will not reopen its Sunset Boulevard location due to COVID-19. Management says they do hope to open in a new Hollywood Boulevard location sooner than expected in the fall. The previous location will be used for a planned housing development. Amoeba's previous location, at the corner of Sunset and Coege, has been closed since mid-March due to the Safer at Home order.
Since the outbreak of COVID-19, city officials have been working hard to bring economic relief to Angelenos. But for some residents, the help they need isn't coming fast enough. They took to City Hall to voice their concerns regarding the city's rent and mortgage moratorium. Take a look.
We're out here today because now we are on day 30 of a rent strike. We started our rent strike on April 1st. We've seen a severe loss in jobs, and so people are having to choose to pay food over rent, just for basic survival. We don't need a 12-month repayment plan. It's great that we have postponed evictions, but eventually, we're still obligated for that rent, and we're not going to be able to pay it. We can't go back to work. If we get our jobs back, it may not be full-time. How are we going to pay our regular rents plus our back rent? We need rent cancellation, and we need it now.
Aritas no tenemos para la renta, ¿verdad? Entonces nosotros lo que queremos que los dueños se toquen el corazón. Que ellos tienen dinero ahorita. Ellos pueden esperarnos a nosotros, pero nosotros no tenemos dinero. Como si usted va a mi casa, mi casa está vacía, yo no tengo comida. Mi niña me pide comida y yo no tengo ahorita.
Cuando se levante toda esta situación, no sabemos si vamos a tener trabajo todavía. Entonces, no queremos que se nos quede una deuda atrasada. Que si ahorita es difícil pagar una renta, ¿cómo vamos a pagar en mensualidades o en pequeñas cuotas la cantidad que vamos a deber en este momento?
I think we all know someone that's struggling right now, so even if it's not affecting you directly, you have family, you have friends, you have neighbors that are being impacted by this. And if you want to stand with them, you want to support them, this is one way that you can do it, and it's something that we can all do. Stand with people who can't pay their rent, because those people are the ones that need our support right now.
Recently, Mayor Garcetti announced that free COVID-19 testing would be available to anyone who wanted one, whether they had symptoms or not. We visited a testing site that has been in Boyle Heights for weeks. Their mission: to make sure no community is forgotten.
One of the areas, especially the area that we're here in around Pennsylvania, near the Mariachi Plaza, is one of the most underserved areas for testing. Here in the L.A. County, we're having evaluation centers where you can actually come and be tested and have an evaluation from a medical doctor or facilitator. That way, your questions will be answered, plus you will be tested, and we are here to help the community.
So, a lot of our community didn't realize that Altmed was here and were available for the services for them. We've been giving them free care when they're here. We're also giving them information that's vital for them for their care in the future, not just for today.
AT&amp;T's connectivity right now is considered essential with our mobile phones, our Wi-Fi, our TV services, and we're servicing customers like the people that are here today. So, it's important that AT&amp;T offers solutions to companies like Altmed, but also that we're here in the community. We're here in the community helping people that need help today. All these tests have to be sent through Wi-Fi to the testing. That's being done because of the mobile unit that we provide the connectivity for this particular location.
In general, this area that we're serving right now has been very, very hard-headed by the coronavirus 19, in the economical part of it and then the medical part of it. And one of the important things to reopen the economy, to reopen the services, to make sure that the community is getting the health services that they need, is we need testing and evaluation. And that's why here with Altmed, we're doing that.
We'll ask them questions. We evaluate them through the doctor and then give them a COVID test. It usually takes five business days for the results.
We're here for you. We care about the community. We care about everybody here. We want everybody to be safe.
Take one fun-loving music teacher, add in some great acoustic tunes, sprinkle in some good social distancing practices, and voila! You've got yourself a Saturday night porch concert.
It's frustrating being on quarantine, and especially if you're a musician, and your life is performing. And we don't have many opportunities to perform now, or hardly any. So, you know so many people are out on their porches. And what we've also done is I have limited personnel that I can use in a band, so my 13-year-old daughter is playing with me, and she's gotten really good, because this is her fourth gig. She plays a gig every Saturday now. Amazing people have come from Lower Canyon, and this is just a continuation of that, where everybody who has a musical gift comes out on the porch at 7 o'clock on Saturdays.
The fact that now with the lockdown, it's an opportunity for him to play for people and give them something to appreciate at the weekend. It's really hard when you can't listen to live music, and the fact that we have this extraordinary situation where we have all these neighbors who are musicians.
It's quite an experience, you know, because it's all of your friends right outside next to you.
To be honest, it's the highlight of the entire week. I mean, all we do is go to the grocery store, walk the dog. So, coming here just feels like a party. It feels like old times.
I mean, it's been wonderful. It's been so great, and, you know, everybody's being safe. Everyone has their mask.
We're all dying to play, and this is the way to do it in a safe way. And I think that the canyon is all about being together, and since we have to be apart, we're trying to be together but still being apart.
The Safer at Home order has afforded most of us the time to finally get to the book we've been meaning to read. But many Angelenos don't have a couch to curl up on, much less a good book to dive into. But fear not, because the L.A. Public Library is coming to the rescue.
So, the Los Angeles Public Library unfortunately had to close, like most other institutions in the city. So, the Street Fleet program, which is our van right behind me there, we have a fleet of three Street Fleet vans that are going to cover the city of L.A. These vans are designed to bring the library to people.
We have some shelters, some COVID shelters. They have people that would like to read. We're bringing the library to them. We're bringing them books so that they can have something to read while they're in quarantine.
So, these are shelters that were not in existence prior to the pandemic that are housing unhoused residents of L.A. during the COVID-19 pandemic. We cannot check out books. The library is going to take back at this time. So, any books that we are giving out are for the residents to keep.
They're books that we've had on our shelves that we have weeded out. They've been replaced by other books, and we're donating them.
This van here, this green one, is going to cover the downtown area, northeast L.A., and the Hollywood region.
The orange van, which is a pumpkin orange, it'll be in the San Fernando Valley, east and west. And then, we have another team that will be in the magenta van, and they're going to be in the central southern. It's changing the face of the way that not just the LAPL does business, but libraries across the world are going to do business. We're going to have to look at more digital content and more of the way that we can, we want to reach people, because we are not, you know, people laugh at me because I say we are no longer just the house of books. We are technology-driven too. And I think that that's part of what this is doing, is it's bringing it to the forefront.
The library is also providing other services from the librarians who are staying at home. So, you'll see children's librarians providing online storytimes, adult librarians providing online programs as well.
Hi, everyone. Welcome to Mini Digital Storytime, Day Six.
Hello, everyone. Hopefully, you can hear me. I am today going to show you how to access our e-media with your phones.
The library is continuing to try to engage with the community so that they know that we're still here for them.
We're the Street Fleet. Look for the vans. We're going to be out. If you see us, wave, take our picture. Hashtag is put on social media. We can't wait to be a part of everything.
The greatest challenges posed by the COVID-19 pandemic are twofold: how to mobilize resources and services, and then get them to the people who need them the most. Well, there's one city agency that has long been regarded as expert on the subject: the Los Angeles Fire Department.
I'm extremely proud of the Los Angeles City Fire Department's flexibility and dedication to our mission to save lives during this COVID-19 pandemic. Navigating our new normal while keeping the public and our firefighters safe are the reasons why we continue to adjust our operational policies and procedures. It's been a long journey with the coronavirus pandemic accelerating its implementation. So, I'm very pleased to say that we launched our telemedicine program this week.
I'm looking at you. Your skin color looks real great.
It's innovative and timely. The LAFD Telemedicine Program, or LTP, connects 911 callers with specifically trained emergency physicians and EMS advance providers at Metropolitan Fire Communications, or MFC. LTP's goals are to decrease the exposure of the department's firefighters and paramedics to potentially infected patients, decrease the exposure of healthcare professionals to additional COVID-19 patients, lower emergency room overcrowding, decrease the number of ambulances dispatched to non-emergency patients who can safely treat themselves, and enable highly-trained healthcare professionals to evaluate patients via smartphones in their homes. Thanks to the mayor's innovation fund, the telemedicine program has evolved to provide an additional layer of response to protect all involved.
The COVID-19 pandemic is really the catalyst to implement this program to allow us to provide expert medical treatment and advice through specially-trained physicians and advanced providers to patients in their home and minimize the need for ambulance dispatch and transport to the emergency department for low-acuity patients.
Okay, sir, and what is the address of the emergency?
Here's how the telemedicine program works. After a call is received, an LAFD dispatcher will ask a series of questions to determine if the patient has low acuity, non-urgent, and if the caller qualifies for telemedicine.
Please stay on the phone, sir. I'm going to transfer you to our fire department advanced provider.
When a caller meets the criteria, the dispatcher transfers them to a telemedicine provider or TP.
And are you taking any medications right now?
If the TP decides to proceed virtually, he or she will send a link to the caller's smartphone.
We're connecting via telemedicine to see if we can, you know, figure out what we can do for you.
After a thorough evaluation, the TP either will provide self-treatment advice or send an ALS or BLS resource if it turns out the patient does need to be seen in an emergency room.
Can I have you take a deep breath and then count to 30 as fast as you can in that single breath?
If the LAFD transport isn't necessary, the TP can dispatch a taxi prepaid by the city to take the patient to a local health clinic. For example, through telemedicine, the TP can handle a simple skin rash complaint instead of dispatching an ambulance to transport to an ER, putting LAFD members and the patient at risk of infectious diseases like coronavirus.
I have no doubt that the telemedicine program will continue to exist long after we get through this pandemic and far, far into the future.
We'll be taking a look at more ways the Fire Department keeps Los Angeles moving forward safely and swiftly in the coming weeks. Enjoy the Los Angeles Chamber Orchestra at home. Volunteers with sewing skills wanted. And former First Lady Michelle Obama brings storytime to Mondays. All this next on Virtual Things to Do. The Sew Helpful Brigade is seeking to create 30,000 cloth face masks for frontline healthcare workers in Los Angeles, and they are calling for additional volunteers to help in the effort. The group formed by five professional local women is working with retailers and donors, such as Joann's Fabric, Michael's Stores, and Raw Artists, Inc. According to the group, it has already been able to provide cloth masks to Children's Hospital Los Angeles, Totally Kids, the Long Beach Medical Center, and other healthcare facilities in Los Angeles. Hand-sewn cloth masks preserve medical-grade mask lifespans. To get involved, contact anna@sohelpfleeteam@gmail.com. Check out the Los Angeles Chamber Orchestra's massive musical offering with L.A. Chamber Orchestra at home. LACO allows people everywhere to engage and listen to spellbinding performances with America's finest chamber orchestra. No subscription, sign-up, or payment required. It is easier than ever by exploring their easily-navigated website. All broadcasts can be livestreamed at laco.org/broadcasts or streamed on demand at laco.org/ondemand. Check out classes, performances, and more with Meet the Music On Demand. Visit laco.org. Former First Lady Michelle Obama is on board for a special collaboration. In support of Penguin Random House Literacy Initiative, Read Together, Be Together, and PBS Kids Read Along effort, the former First Lady will launch Mondays with Michelle Obama. The initiative is a four-week series of videos that will feature Mrs. Obama reading aloud from beloved children's books. One book every Monday through May 11. Mondays with Michelle Obama will be livestreamed simultaneously on PBS Kids' Facebook page and YouTube channel, and on Penguin Random House's Facebook page. Mondays with Michelle Obama begins April 20. For more information, visit pbs.org. And that's a look at some virtual things to do. With temperatures rising, our pals at L.A. Animal Services have some tips to help keep pets cool. Never leave your pet alone in a vehicle. Give your pet extra water. Avoid hot surfaces. Don't leave your pet outdoors for a long time. And know the signs of overheating. For more information, visit laanimalservices.com. That's it for this edition. I'm Maria Hall Brown. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. See you next time for more L.A. This Week. The warning numbers are about to start in two minutes.
Good morning, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, May 5. I'm Nuri Martinez, the president of the City Council. With me in council chambers are essential staff only. As permitted under the governor's executive order of March 17, all other council members are teleconferencing from remote locations. Also consistent with the governor's order, all public comment will be taken telephonically. I will announce a recess in case we have any technical issues or lose a quorum of members. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? Lumenfield.
Lumenfield, present.
Bonin.
Bonin, present.
Buscaeno.
Here.
Sadio.
Present.
Harris-Dawson.
Harris-Dawson.
Weisar.
Here.
Corretz.
Present.
Krikorian.
Here.
Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Price.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rue.
Present.
Wesson. 14 members in a quorum, Madam President. Okay, first order of business? Approval of the minutes of April 29, 2020. Mr. Krikorian moves, and Mr. Lee seconds, next. Commendatory resolutions for approval? Mr. Price moves, and Mr. Sadio seconds, next. Madam President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute. Everyone, please rise for the flag salute. Mr. Harris-Dawson, would you please lead us in the flag salute this morning?
Yes, everyone place your right hands over your heart. Repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and run through the agenda. Thank you, Madam President. Would council like all items to go forth with today? Without objection, that will be the order next. There has been a request to continue Item 1A through J to Wednesday, June 24, Item 21 to Tuesday, May 12, to hold Items 20 and 36 for an amendment, and to receive and file Item 37. Okay, without objection, that will be the order next. Items 1 through 8 are items noticed for public hearing. Items 9 and 10 are items for which a public hearing has been held. Items 11 through 39 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. Okay, without objection, those items are now before us, members. The clerk will go through the roll call again. When you hear your name, please say whether you'd like to call any of these items special or if you're calling an item special for the purpose of an amendment or discussion. Madam Clerk, can you please go through the roll? Lumenfield.
Lumenfield, no specials.
Bonin.
Bonin, no specials.
Buscaeno.
Buscaeno, no specials.
Sadio.
No specials.
Harris-Dawson.
No specials.
Weisar.
No specials.
Corretz.
Nothing special.
Krikorian.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to call Item 20 special for purpose. I'd like to call item 20 special for purposes of an amendment, please.
Thank you. Lee.
Lee, no specials.
Martinez. No specials. O'Farrell.
No specials, thank you.
Price.
No specials.
Rodriguez.
Calling 28, 29, and 30 for clarification of the recommendation.
Thank you. Items 28, 29, and 30?
Correct.
Rodriguez, okay. Rue.
No specials.
Wesson.
Wesson, no specials.
Thank you. For those, oh, excuse me. Continue, Madam Clerk. For those members with amended motions, when I call your name, can you please state your amendment? Councilmember Krikorian for item 20.
Thank you very much. I'd like to move that the council amend the consideration of motion relative to establishing the Senior Meal Delivery Enhancement Fund as a temporary loan for COVID-19 response and related actions. Council filed 20-0530 and item 20 on today's agenda to do the following. One, strike recommendation numbers 3 and 4 as they appear on the agenda. And two, replace them with a new recommendation 3, which would read as follows. Authorize the Controller to transfer a $75 million appropriation from Fund 48R Building and Safety Permit Enterprise Fund, Department 8, Account 08S204, Reserve for future cost, to Fund 100, Department 56, Account 000955, COVID-19 Emergency Response, with $25 million of that sum to be dedicated to senior meal delivery enhancements, and with the understanding that these funds are a temporary loan to be repaid from future general fund and/or state and federal funds for COVID-19 response.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. O'Farrell. Thank you. Next amendments, items 28, 29, and 30 for Councilmember Rodriguez.
One second. Okay, we're going to adopt the CAO recommendations in the CAO report dated February 28th. For items 28, 29, and, I'm sorry, for item 28. For item 29, we are going to adopt the CAO's recommendations dated April 22nd, 2020. And for item 30, we're going to adopt the CAO's recommendations dated April 22nd, 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Just to confirm, was that Councilmember O'Farrell? Yes. Thank you. The final amendment would be for item 36. Councilmember Harris Dawson, do you have an amendment for that item?
Yes, I want to move that the council action of April 10, 2018, relative to a lien in the amount of $3,815.14 for 1438 West 28th Street, be amended to eliminate the late fee charge in the amount of $2,490 and the accumulated interest of $216 associated with this case and to confirm a lien in this reduced amount of $1,109.14.
And is there a second for that motion?
Second.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Councilman Bonin.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Would you like to move on to public comment? Yes, Madam Clerk, thank you, members. We're just, we're going to move on to public comment. Madam Clerk, would you please read out the collating information that was provided on the agenda for today's meeting? Thank you. As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-900-6833 and use meeting ID number 459-499-150 and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Let me repeat, call 669-900-6833 and use meeting ID number 459-499-150 and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. City Attorney, would you please explain the speaking rules to members of the public that are calling in to speak this morning?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Madam President. To members of the public calling in, when it is your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes total, and if you wish, one minute for general public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on topic or if we cannot tell whether you're speaking on an agenda item, you will get one brief warning from me or the President. If you do not immediately and clearly get on topic or again stray off topic, the President will cut you off and you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time and we will move to the next speaker. We will take 60 minutes total of public comment. Finally, for members of the public calling in to speak, if you're also listening to the council meeting on your computer or on a speakerphone or Channel 35, as soon as you hear the council president on the phone, immediately turn down the volume on those devices. There's a time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast and it will become very confusing if you're listening on your computer or on the television rather than on the telephone. That's it, thank you.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and begin with the first speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Prakash Menkaraman and I'm hoping to talk about the community response to the pandemic specifically in downtown LA.
So you want to speak under general public comments? You have one minute, go ahead.
Okay. So I live in South Park and I've found that as the community response to the pandemic has been invisible to me. I've tried to get involved and usually I've been shuttled to various places, either to blood donation banks or to general public service, all of which are great, fulfilling opportunities. But what I've found is that every member of the community has their own particular skill set. Myself in particular, I specialize in building information systems and each person can put these skills to use. Now, I've reached out to multiple people on the council about building a Slack group, a forum of some kind, something just to make two-way communication between residents and local governance easy and clear. But I've been, I've found there to be considerable friction in trying to do something like this. So I'm here trying to gauge whether or not there are other people in the community who would find use in something like this and what the options are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Jim Lesnar, general public comments.
You have one minute, sir?
Hi, my name's Jim Lesnar. My email address is jim@vivahermosa.com. And a couple weeks ago, on April 17th, five counties in the San Francisco Bay Area put out a public order banning the use of valved masks. Those are the face masks that you'll see that have a plastic piece on the front of them. It's a one-way valve allowing the wearer to exhale without his breath going through the filtering material. In other words, he can spread whatever disease he might have without it being filtered at all. I'd like to know why we haven't followed suit here in Los Angeles. It's been now three weeks and it's, and that was, that order was adopted by five counties in the San Francisco Bay Area. I hope that you will bring your public health officer in front of the city council and ask them to explain why LA City has not followed suit.
Thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Edgar Escobar, I'm just listening in on the social equity grant money.
What items would you like to speak on?
I'm just listening, is that fine? I'm not trying to speak on, I'm trying to listen in on the social equity grant.
So do you want to speak under general public comment?
No, thank you.
So you don't want to speak at all?
No, no, I just want to, I just want to hear.
Okay, thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Noel Weiss. I want to speak on general public comment and item 20, and item 27 on today's agenda.
Okay, you've got one minute for item 27 and then one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, and item number 27, I want to oppose this item. This is an authorization to lease the Griffith Park Bridge facility, unlawfully authorized in any event to PATH. I noted my comments in writing in general public comment as well as in a letter to the council, but summarizing it briefly, the city is not authorized to sublease any Reckon Parks property to a third party. This lease was never authorized by the Department of Reckon Parks, let alone for five years. Secondly, there's no monies going to Reckon Parks for this project or for this, under this so-called sublease, there's no monies going even to the city. There's a risk to public health and safety. The park rangers take care of policing the parks. The city's liability exposure here is huge in the event that PATH basically, whose promise is unsecured, no indication of insurance, screws up. One guard at the facility does not have jurisdiction or authority over Griffith Park or over the surrounding protection of the public. This is basically an incompetent proposal. It needs to be vetted, there needs to be hearings, and the council should not approve it in any way, shape, or form. It violates Charter Sections 594 and 595. And more importantly, it's, the Department of General Services is not authorized in law to sign any kind of service provider agreements, be it with PATH or any other third party.
Do you want to move on to your one minute?
So the council needs to reject this proposal. With regard to general public comment, my general public comment is as follows. One, I've yet to hear or read of any sacrifice by members of the city council, by the mayor, by the controller, by the city attorney, Mayor wannabe, Mr. Fuhrer, who basically, you, you, people, be they landlords or tenants, are in a position where if they are healthy, they cannot work by order of the mayor. Meanwhile, they cannot fulfill their obligations. They are incurring an extreme financial sacrifice. None of you on the council is prepared even to share in that sacrifice. You're getting your salary, you're not being harmed financially, and yet you're imposing this on other people. The manner in which this is being managed is really frankly beyond outrageous and authoritarian and tyrannical. The original purpose was to lower the curve, flatten the curve, and make sure that there was provision for adequate hospital care. Those goals have been achieved. It's time to put healthy people back to work, both in small businesses.
Thank you, sir, your time is up, thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Claudia Alisea, in 1547 Baypoint Avenue, but lean, Wilmington, California.
Okay, what items do you want to speak on?
On the lean filed for 1547 North Baypoint Avenue in Wilmington, California.
Okay, we continued that item, ma'am?
I'm sorry?
We continued your item?
Oh, you did, okay. Only because me and my husband got affected by the COVID-19, so we're not at work and we're unable to pay at this time.
Ma'am, we continued your item till June 24th.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, yes, this is Richie Serjenko from Sunrise Movement LA. I wanted to speak on 15 and public comment.
You have one minute for item 15 and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Hi, yes, I just wanted to say that, you know, the LA Times came out and said that over 50% of Los Angeles has lost their jobs, of the workers in Los Angeles have lost their jobs due to the COVID-19 crisis. And a lot of people are unable to pay rent at the moment, myself included. I was unable to pay rent in April and I received a quit or pay now notice from my landlord. I was under the expectation, due to the city's promotion, that the eviction moratorium would potentially protect me. However, when I was unable to pay rent, my landlord still filed an eviction notice and although I can't be physically evicted at the moment, they're starting the process as so as soon as the emergency order is lifted that they can begin to actually physically evict me.
Sir, you're not speaking to item 15, so I'm going to go ahead and give you a minute of general public comment.
Okay, yes, public comment. I just want city council members to know that you do have the power to pass a citywide rent freeze. San Jose, just the other day, passed a rent freeze for thousands of apartments and mobile homes in San Jose. And so you do have the power to do so. And if you would like to actually help the people of Los Angeles and the people that are struggling, you can just, you know, pass a motion or an order saying that there is a rent freeze or a rent suspension. You know, you can't rely on the no legal authority argument because, you know, you can fall in the path of San Jose. They've already done it for you. There's, there's nothing holding you back anymore. Good luck.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, my name is Sergio and I'm here for the social equity meeting through the state and I wanted to listen into the meeting.
So you don't wish to speak? You're listening to the city council meeting. It looks like you've signed up to speak for either an item on today's agenda or general public comment.
Hello?
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Eric Previn, can you hear me?
Hi, Mr. Previn. What items would you like to speak on?
Okay, I'm just muting this thing. I'm going to speak on item number 33. Wait, I hear someone else, is that for a reason?
Yeah, you need to, you need to lower the volume on your device.
Okay, I just did. So I'm here to speak on item 1433, 2026, and a general public comment, and maybe 19.
You have three minutes for your items and one minute for your general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll do my best. So, thank you. The item number 33 caught my attention because this is a deal that took place in June of 2017, but now we're amending it slightly to, first of all, the, it was a swap of some property between the city of LA and NetWorks LLC, which is owned by Dr. Patrick Soon-Shang and is the company that he owned before acquiring the LA Times. Now, at the time, I don't think he owned the LA Times. But the deal which we're talking about is kind of a, it caught my attention because when I first saw it, it seemed like the properties that were being swapped, first of all, it was elaborately confusing. Herb Wesson was bringing it as the acting mayor. This is an odor control. This is an odor control motion, meaning there's a piece of property, they wanted to do something to make the smells go away. And by flipping these two properties, because he owned a property nearby, it seemed to be a good idea. But I just wondered, because then I looked more closely, and the college district, which is packed full of politicos, were the obstacle to this moving forward. And obviously, these are Wesson's kind of colleagues and cronies, Sidney Komlager, a bunch of characters. So I just, I just want to make sure that now he's changed the name to an LLC. It used to be owned by Networks LLC. Now it's changed to, you know, I think it's ninety-nine, what's the address? It doesn't matter, let's move forward. But I just wanted to alert people to that because, you know, there's a concern about, it's 9940 West Jefferson Boulevard, about the proximity between the ownership of the Times and the city government because they don't get the harshest coverage. Now, we're not looking for harsh coverage, we're looking for good governance, so let's try to stay focused. Item fourteen refers to the Prop K, which was a 1996 voter initiative to put stuff in parks and wrecks all over the city. Ours has been completely taken over by interests that are not the public and who live in Studio City to try to put a large, oversized basketball court, if you can believe it, on one of the last bits of our priceless open space where people play and bring their kids and families and so on. So it's a terrible idea to put a city structure there and I would urge, we don't have the funding because it was tied to a variety of failed initiatives to get funding, but I don't want to push harder and get our friends at the county of Los Angeles to provide that funding. Because what we want, we have a fair amount of money from Prop K to do a nice redo of the place, we don't want to encroach on the open space. Then, moving down the line, how much, I want to get to my, I think probably general public comment.
Go ahead, you have your one minute of general public-
Hold on, Mr. Previn. And, what, yeah.
Yeah, now you have your one minute, go ahead.
Right, I was just, my internal clock was going off. Okay, so I, I want to talk about public comment and how frustrating it is. I was in a vacuum, a little box, and I've been there every time you have a meeting and sometimes I get called, sometimes I don't. That's not really good enough. At least you're making an effort because up Grand Park to the right at Kenahan Hall of Administration, and the LA Times have editorialized about it twice, one of the most egregious violations, and I hope anybody is listening, by the County Board of Supervisors is underway regularly, and they need to get their act together and start meeting and taking public comment. The Freedom of, the First Amendment Coalition had a whole little Zoom chat about this kind of conduct. As I said, the newspapers and the public are completely left out of the process. Now, I know that there are some thought leaders over there on disenfranchising input from the public, and they would prefer to have hours of presentations as opposed to a single sentence that criticizes what they do. But that's not our system and it's not really appropriate at all now. I feel they're in violation of the Brown Act and I know that certainly it's a little awkward speaking to this body as if they're some sort of an authority because I know that you regularly do-
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
Pleasant, yeah, very thrilled. Okay, have a great-
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hello, just a second, let me mute my device. My name is Brad Sagal, I'd like to comment on item twenty-two, twenty-four, and general public comment.
You have two minutes for your items and one minute for your general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Items twenty-two and twenty-four both regard bridge housing. First of all, I'd like to just make clear, I do support the items with reservations. Bridge housing is temporary. We need a permanent solution for homelessness. We need a permanent solution for housing as well. I think what city council is doing today is nibbling around the edges of the homeless issue when you've got forty-four thousand homeless people plus God knows how many people on the verge of homelessness and no one has housing stability here in LA because no one knows if they will be on the streets in five years, ten years, or fifteen years. Right now, a lot of people, if, if you feel like you're doing okay here in the city of LA financially, you might be on the streets in five years or ten years or fifteen years or you might be living in your car. So we need a housing guarantee. Everyone needs to be guaranteed a safe place to lay their head at night or they can go to the bathroom, take a shower, wash their hands, and have some privacy. Bridge housing doesn't always offer privacy, privacy is very important. We're guaranteed privacy by the Constitution. We're guaranteed general welfare by the very first sentence of the Constitution. And we, look around LA, do you think we have a good general welfare right now in the pandemic? When no one's making any money, when people are afraid they're going to get evicted? So item twenty-four, I'm with the LA Coalition, we're the largest coalition of labor unions, tenant unions, legal aid societies, nonprofit organizations, and religious congregations that has ever been assembled in the history of the city of LA. And we're a strong coalition. And like I said, bridge housing is not enough, we want stronger solutions, we want tenants' rights to counsel, we want rent forgiveness. It's funny that the city council said that they can't do rent forgiveness because it might violate the law. Since when are politicians in LA afraid of breaking the law? Oh my God, you guys break the law all the time. You violate the law, you violate the-
You want to move on to your general public comment?
Constitutional rights, citizen. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I said, you want to move on to your general public comment now?
I'm sorry, I can't really hear you.
Your general public comment-
But I'll move forward to- Yeah, okay, so let me do the general public comment because I'm sure I'm, I'm slightly off topic right now, but it's all connected. As I mentioned, I'm with the Healthy LA Coalition. We have a lot of organizations in our coalition that have experience with nonviolent direct action, civil disobedience protests. And basically, the city council has acted in total bad faith throughout this pandemic. So Martin Luther King said, "The purpose of nonviolent action is to create such a crisis and foster such a tension that a community which has constantly refused to negotiate is to force to confront the issue." And on the issue of housing, homelessness, and poverty, city council has acted in total bad faith. So we're going to need to move forward to nonviolent direct action at the airports, at the port of LA, at City Hall, at your district offices, in the courts, at your speeches, at your fundraising events, at your houses, at the businesses you own and at the businesses your donors own. We don't have stability in our lives, so then we're not going to let you have stability in your lives either.
Thank you, sir.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to- Please state your name and what item-
My name is Len Moses.
Good morning, what items would you, would you like to speak on?
I know you probably all missed me. Number one, number thirty-eight and public comment, please.
Okay, you've got two minutes for your, for your items and your one minute of general public comment, sir.
Okay, thank you, good morning, and good morning to the public. To another meeting of the corrupt Los Angeles City Council. Item number one, like always, I oppose these liens, these nuisance liens for abatement costs and noncompliance. These should all be taken into consideration as far as just how much of a nuisance they really are. These are people's properties and in the, in the advent of COVID-19. You corrupt LA City Council with your $200,000-plus salaries. That's what they make public, two, over $200,000 a year, are putting liens on people's properties. These should all be looked at and judged as to whether they are a really a public nuisance or not, as opposed to just minor violations, which most of these are. And in a lot of cases, just excuses to take people's properties and control people's properties. These should all be abated, a moratorium should be put on these liens, which you're not going to do because you're all corrupt. Item number thirty-eight is another one of these famous HHH bond funds, the $1.2 billion that the LA City Council and the mayor are stealing on a daily basis from the good people of Los Angeles who put forward this bond fund, put forward their, their backing of this fund. This particular item, just for historical, the average unit of HHH project has been over 600,000-
Mr. Moses, you want to go move on to your general public comment, you have one minute left.
By the city controller, $600,000 per unit public, not per building, per unit. This project here is $23 million from corrupt sleazy Marquisi Dawson, he's known as in our community. $23 million for six units, that's $360,000 per unit. This is gross mismanagement, this is all you people are doing, caring about nothing but these developers. Dawson went so far as to try to steal the EDD office on 54th and Crenshaw, the Dorset Village Project, putting out 206 people on this, households on the street that's almost 1,000 people to raise up 784 luxury units with pools, spas, swimming pools. Is that going to the homeless? No, you people have no idea, you have no-
Thank you, Mr. Moses, your time is up. Thank you, sir.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Jane Nguyen, general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute, go ahead.
Hi, this is Jane from Key Town For All. I support all the bridge home shelters on the agenda today, obviously, but there must be more that can be done right now to save lives. With the upcoming heat waves, there is nowhere for people to go because all the places that they used to go to for AC are closed, libraries, community centers, shopping malls, restaurants, there is nowhere for people to go to escape the heat. And LA County opening up 10 cooling centers for the entire county is an absolute joke. So I suggest that you open up all city-owned buildings and property for use as cooling centers immediately and provide drinking water because that's the absolute least that you can do to save lives right now. And in Koreatown, we know of at least two people who have died during the COVID-19 crisis on the streets. So it's an absolute failure if you can't provide these very basic things for people to survive during COVID-19. And in Koreatown, there are porta-potties that need to be serviced, especially at Sefan Hope Bar in Wilshire, New Hampshire, so please continue to service and maintain hygiene stations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
I'd like to speak on non-agenda items.
Okay, you've got one minute of general public comment, go ahead.
Hi, this is David Wheatley calling in from Silverlake. Thanks for having the meeting and making it available for people like me to Zoom in. I would like to express my concerns about developer power. I think they have too much power and I think we need to have no more multi-unit building in single-family areas, including adjacent corridors. I'd like to make the unreasonable and reasonable request that we have a moratorium on all new and existing building until we can work out the zoning problem and also the traffic problems and the mental health issues that creates also the mental health issues that displacements of people, including renters and also neighbors that are affected by construction. The City Planning Commission needs to be reminded they need to be nice to people. One commissioner berated an appellant a week ago Thursday and they seem to vote yes on every, on every application and no on every appeal. They do not seem to have the ability to deliberate, so the system seems to me unfair. City planners need to exercise the will of the people, including-
Thank you, sir. Your, your time is up, thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Pamela Chanel and this is kind of an emergency agenda I'd like to bring forward about DCR and that I'm license holder number 274 of the social equity programs, tier one and two. And I've been requesting for a change of address, which we haven't been able to get in front of you. DCR was supposed to put it up on agenda-
Ma'am, hold on for just a second, so you don't, you have an item you want to speak on?
Uh, the DCR-
Or do you want to speak under general public comment?
My public comment is that we need, I need you people to please put an emergency vote in today to allow us for phase two to have a change of address. We're getting pressure from DCR to request it by June 3rd. And there's probably 200 of us that still need a change of address authorization because after the change of address last year, some of us had extenuating circumstances from landlords and we are getting pushed out and I've paid my $24,000. I'm also waiting on tier three, tier, phase three, and, and I understand the money's important, but it's important that we still have our stance. I've been in the business trying to fight for my, to start up on this extenuating circumstances with COVID that we, I need to get going on my license so I can start helping people and participating with the wealth of the city. And I'm just imploring the people here at City Hall to please vote today to allow phase two holders to please-
Thank you, ma'am, your time is up.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Eric Kelly, general public comment.
You have one minute, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, it's been said the best way to prevent the spread of COVID-19 is to stay home and wash your hands. Those are two things that are damn near impossible when you don't have a house. I think it's time we commandeer the hotel rooms for unhoused, unhoused folks in our community. This isn't just a matter of public safety, this is a human rights issue. On top of that, I also think we should not have to pay rent because none of us are making money. Thanks a lot, appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Brandon Bolton, I'm the executive director of United Corall Land. I would like to speak on item number thirty-two.
Uh, one minute, sir, to speak on item thirty-two, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so I would just like to thank the leadership of the council and also the Department of Cannabis Regulation for, you know, beginning the process to accept these funds. These funds really will help remove some of the final barriers for social equity members such as myself, you know, with capital assistance, I know a lot of that has to go directly to grants and loans, but then also to administration and working with organizations like Indica who have been doing this work down that area and, you know, across the statewide and nation, they have been doing great work and I would love to see them, you know, ongoing, have a, have a role in this industry for social equity members that have helped, you know, individuals like myself. So I just wanted to thank you all for starting that process and looking forward to removing some of the barriers and getting access.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Okay, that concludes public comment for the portion of our agenda, including general public comments, so I will go ahead and close that. Okay, members, we're going to recess for 10 minutes. While we get organized, we'll be back in 10 minutes. Thank you.
So right now, I'll do the opening roll call, and it's eleven oh one.
Oh, and then I'll do the totals on the ones.
Okay.
All right. Members, we're coming back. All right, Madam Clerk, why don't you call the roll? Bloomingfield. Bloomingfield. Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, present.
Bonin.
Bonin, present.
Buscaino. Buscaino. Sadio.
Present.
Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson, present.
Weisar.
Here.
Coretts. Coretts.
Present.
Krikorian.
Here.
Lee.
Sit here.
Martinez. Present. O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rue.
Present.
You missed the state boss?
Wesson. Members, can you please mute yourselves? Thank you. Just a reminder, please continue, Madam Clerk. Wesson. Thirteen members in a quorum, Madam President. Okay, members, we're going to now vote on a few items that were not called, that were not called specials or amended. So, Madam Clerk, why don't we go ahead and vote on a few items?
Thank you, Madam President. We are ready to vote on items two through nineteen, twenty-two through twenty-seven, thirty-one through thirty-five, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine.
Please call the roll. Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sadio.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson, yes.
Weisar.
Yes.
Coretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fifteen ayes. All these matters are adopted.
Okay, members, we're going to move on to items that were amended.
Thank you, Madam President. Those items that are as amended are item twenty, twenty-eight, thirty, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-six.
Please call the roll. Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Aye.
Harris Dawson. Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson, aye.
Weisar.
Yes.
Coretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
I'm sorry, I, I, uh, I had a question. I thought we were going to have a conversation based on the amendment. My apologies, on item twenty.
Would, do you like us to pull?
Okay, let's, let's hold item twenty on the desk, and let's proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So continue, so for items twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-six. Rodriguez. Rue.
Aye.
And Wesson.
Aye.
Fifteen ayes. These items are adopted as amended.
Okay, let's move on to item number twenty. Ms. Rodriguez, item number twenty? Ms. Rodriguez, item number twenty?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Um, so colleagues, I, I just had a quick question, and, and Mr. Krikorian, perhaps, I, I don't know if maybe someone from the CAO's. I know, uh, there's this amendment to allocate, uh, the additional seventy-five million, but I'm trying to ascertain, I know, given the participation of, uh, of the new regulations with the senior meal program and how it's actually inhibited, uh, more seniors from participating, how this twenty-five million, based on the original allocation, uh, what are we looking at in terms of, do we have any projections on what the expenditures might look like through the distribution to the local restaurants versus, uh, the Unite Here collaboration that was developed, um, based on what the initial, based on some of the initial scope? And, and again, I just, and I wanted to be clear, this additional seventy-five million, it's to cover, uh, all the additional, um, emergency expenditures?
Ms. Krikorian?
Yeah, so, uh, Ms. Rodriguez, I can, uh, answer that generally, and if we have somebody from the CAO's office, uh, who might want to provide, uh, more details, uh, who can join in, uh, that would be helpful as well, but, um, so.
Mr. Krikorian, there is no one here from the, from the CAO's office to answer any questions.
Okay.
There's no one here.
Well, um, the mayor's emergency response pursuant to the mayor's, uh, authority, uh, in responding to the emergency, um, has included expenditure for a variety of emergency response items.
Yes.
Fifty million dollars of this seventy million is, um, retroactive approval of borrowing that has already been done for COVID-19 responses from the Building and Safety, um, Enterprise Fund. So, all of this will be, uh, repaid to the Enterprise Fund, um, through, uh, the different reimbursement sources that we'll be getting. The twenty-five million is, um, similarly, uh, that, that's to support the senior meals program. Ninety-four percent of that is due to be reimbursed. So, the city's, um, share of that payment, if you will, will be six percent. Seventy-five percent is set to be reimbursed by FEMA, and twenty-one percent by the state. So, that's why the, uh, meals program is, uh, the eligibility factors on the meals program are what they are, so that we can get the ninety-four percent reimbursement of those costs. Now, to your point about, um, projections as between local restaurants and the, um, larger meal production process, uh, that's happening right now through the large banquet kitchens and so on, and through the, um, the trainee program that Unite Here has. That's still to be determined. Um, we'll see how much demand there is. Um, I've spoken to a number of members already, and I would like to urge all members, as we're talking about this, um, to please reach out to your senior community as much as you can to let them know about this program, because, um, I, I've been underwhelmed by the response by senior participants so far. There, there are certainly thousands of people who have signed up who wouldn't otherwise have access to a meal program. So this program has been extraordinarily valuable for them, um, but I, I feel like there should be more who are signing up, and it may be that just our communications vehicles have not reached as widely as they should within the senior community, uh, in all of our districts. So as more people sign up, there will be much more opportunity to expand this program to include more restaurants to be able to meet that need, and not just the larger-scale banquet kitchen facilities that are really currently meeting that need. As well, and, and by the way, I should also say, in addition to all the work that members are doing individually, because many of our offices are using discretionary funds and other sources right now, uh, to fund. As well, and, and by the way, I should also say, in addition to all the work that members are doing individually, because many of our offices are using discretionary funds and other sources right now, uh, to fund existing senior meal programs through nonprofits and otherwise, uh, and some members are, are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, uh, out of their own discretionary funds in order to do exactly that. So, a lot of the, the need is being met by individual council members' efforts right now. Uh, but even with all of that, at a time like this, I've gotta believe that there's more people who would be helped by, uh, a meals program, a meals delivery program like this, and so I would just urge everyone to try to step up the outreach, so that we can make sure we have as many people signing up for this as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Madam President, and I do wanna, uh, recognize the work, the collective work that's been done, uh, and just, kind of echoing what Mr. Krikorian just mentioned, um, how members are taking upon themselves, using their own discretionary funds to, um, feed our most vulnerable, our senior community, um, and residents. I wanted to, um, in, in my district, we, we actually added the disabled, uh, residents who are actually, uh, at home and, and not able, uh, to get out, uh, in light of the safe, safer-at-home, uh, orders. And I wanna, um, I, I know, Mr. Krikorian, first recognize Marquise Harris Dawson actually launched this, the first one in our city. I took a page out of his playbook, and many of you have done so as well, um, Mr. Sadio, Mr. Rue, um, among others. The, and we're using our discretionary funds. Is, is it an opportunity now to get, to ask for reimbursement, um, from these federal dollars by using our discretionary funds, um, first? And secondly, Mr. Krikorian, as, as Chair of Budget, I know you mentioned there's a six percent gap that we're gonna have to reimburse. I mean, what pot of funds you, you would you recommend? We, in light of, you know, we're taking a hit on our general fund, uh, what would be your recommendation as we move toward, um, the reimbursement of that additional six percent?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Buscaino, and thanks for, uh, recognizing Mr. Harris Dawson, uh, for the extraordinary work he's done in his district, and, um, I very much appreciate his, um, co-presenting this, um, uh, program to all of you. Mr. Sadio, Mr. Wesson, uh, other members have, have also really done, um, extraordinary work to, to produce meal opportunities for thousands of members. So, the twenty-five million that we're, we've set aside for this, um, will produce, um, a program that will feed twenty thousand people with three meals a day for ten weeks. That's, that's the basic breakdown right now. Ninety-four percent of that will be reimbursed, as I said, so, um, I don't have the exact figure, but so that leaves a million and a half dollars or so, uh, that would be the, um, the city's share to pay. It's premature now to identify, um, a specific budgetary source for that. Some, uh, uh, there has been a, a, um, the, the mayor's proposed budget does include COVID response, um, funding, and so that, you know, will be part of, uh, presumably what is set aside already. But because the bud, it, it is so premature to talk about specific budget allocations for, um, the next fiscal year, I, I don't think any of us are prepared to say that. This will come out, frankly, out of current year expenditures, so this will come straight out of the reserve. Like everything else that we are spending that's not reimbursed, it comes out of the reserve that we have spent the last almost a decade building up for exactly this moment. Um, that, for the inevitable downturn in the economy and all the other emergency expenditures we're, uh, facing right now, that is exactly what we have anticipated as a council in building up the record-breaking reserve that we have built up, the highest in the history of the city. This expenditure, like so many others, is going to have to come out of this, out of that, because there is no other place, uh, to get it, without directly eliminating current services in some other area. So, I just wanna, kind of reemphasize that while we don't have a specific, um, identified source for the next fiscal year, uh, for these expenditures, because it's coming out of the reserve for this fiscal year, keep in mind, that means we will have less opportunity, uh, like with every other expenditure, to rely on the full extent of that reserve as we go into the next fiscal year. So, we are spending that right now to keep people alive. Um, and so, uh, it, it, it's, I just wanna remind everyone that as we go into discussion about the budget for, for next year, um, the challenges are gonna be extraordinary.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian, Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Um, no, I know, you know, Mr. Harris Dawson, and I, and I, I love the effort that you have going on in South LA as well, uh, but it is a lot on our discretionary accounts to supplement these programs, and so making sure we're making full use of both what we have available in discretionary versus what's going to be actually made available through this twenty-five million, and that's why I asked these questions. It's more around the fact that I think, you know, we're, we know how difficult the circumstances are in terms of what, uh, this category of funding will provide in terms of, uh, given FEMA and, uh, given FEMA and, um, the state's reimbursement and what we have availed to us. That being said, I don't wanna have a false promise of what we're trying to project for restaurants, when we know right now, the demand is barely even calling for the full implementation based on Unite Here's program. So, and I, and I only say this because I, before council, I was getting blown up by a number of restaurants, like, what's happening, what's happening? And I just want us to be really thoughtful about what we are committing to people, because I don't think this, you know, based on the current demand, based on, and I don't even have a good sense of what the Department of Aging has expended from the initial, uh, allocation of funds, but, you know, is this really going to materialize, or do we have to continue to supplement with more flexibility, our own discretionary, to get some of these restaurateurs, uh, operational again, if you will? Because our guidelines with whatever discretionary we have are far more flexible than what we are able to provide based on, uh, these new higher standards that are set by FEMA and the governor's office. Uh, you know, even just five years of age difference from, it was, you know, 'cause we've been enrolling, uh, an average of ten additional seniors in whatever available programs a week in my office, but, you know, it, it went from sixty years of age to now, as a threshold, to now sixty-five years of age, uh, to qualify folks, and that's a big difference for a lot of families. Uh, the, the challenge is also with, uh, seniors that, uh, are living in multi-generational households. We know, uh, that doesn't mean that the need isn't there, but unfortunately, that's a, uh, it's a, you know, it's a, a severe hit to a lot of those families who are struggling to make ends meet right now. So, um, I just, I, you know, I just kinda wanna put it all in the right context and framing for what we're all doing, and I think what's going to still be required of us, unfortunately, is, uh, to the extent possible, that we're gonna continue to have to supplement these efforts, because I'm not sure that based on that qualifying criteria, that it's actually gonna end up trickling down, and I hate to, to have that perspective, but I'm just kind of seeing it right now, and I'm concerned about it. So, until we, you know, I, if, you know, would it be more favorable, for example, for us to take that potential six percent and roll out our program that actually provides, gets more restaurants out to work? And providing the, the, to meet the gaps that, you know, that we know that exist out there. Um, I just, I wanted to present that, uh, question, and I think going forward, as we watch this roll out, you know, we have to be very nimble. Um, I also know that there's capacity limitations with the Department of Aging, uh, and, and how they can, uh, roll these programs out, and so we just have, I'm just trying to be mindful of all of those things, uh, because I, you know, met, like many, you know, several of you, I know, I mean, I've got eight food pantries that are operating, you know, non-stop, and the senior food delivery services, so we know the great need is out there. We just need to make sure that we're, we're aligning the resources, uh, to where those needs are, so, uh, thank you for the, uh, for the explanation. Appreciate it.
Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Madam President, uh, and I, and thank you, Councilman Krikorian, for bringing this motion. Um, and I, you know, like my colleagues, like everyone on this, uh, on this meeting, I know everyone is working directly, providing food services, or, or partnering up with existing nonprofits or various groups to provide, um, grocery delivery as well as hot meals. Um, I just wanted to add that, um, uh, maybe this could be a motion, when, when this motion comes back with all the, uh, report backs, I know several of us have numerous motions regarding senior food programs, restaurant programs, and, and, and everything all of the above. I mean, I have one in committee as well, in the Economic Development Committee, that's pending for next week, so maybe the CLA could kind of pull all these motions together, because, uh, because Councilmember Krikorian's motion has an actual funding mechanism to it, and see, um, uh, to address all the concerns that were brought up, a, and so we could all hear it at once. So, I just wanted to put that recommendation out there, because I know there's several motions that are, that are different gradients of what this is asking for. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other questions, members? Ms. Krikorian?
Thank you, Madam President, and, uh, just to, to close this up, I think Mr. Rue's suggestion is a good one, and it actually goes to some of Ms. Rodriguez's, uh, concerns, because, in fact, this is a multi-layered, um, strategy, and there are multiple programs that serve multiple different constituencies, different, uh, demographics within these constituencies. Um, for example, this program, the reimbursement that's provided to the state will reach seniors up to six hundred percent of poverty level. So, that's going to reach income levels that are well beyond what some of our existing, uh, other programs that are more poverty-based may be reaching. So, uh, I, I think Mr. Rue's point is a good one. This is kind of a Venn diagram of overlapping programs that we're trying to stitch together to ensure that all needs are met, and, um, it would be helpful to have before the council, a comprehensive analysis of all of that, so we can see, we can make a, a gaps analysis too, and determine, okay, who are we missing so far? What sorts of things do we need to increase support of, and where can we scale back? Right now, we're still a little bit in emergency response, but I think, um, uh, having that kind of an analytical, uh, strategic approach is, is wise. So, I would, I would suggest that we follow the suggestion that Mr. Rue just made.
Okay, Madam Clerk, is prepared to vote on this item?
Okay, so we are voting on item twenty as amended.
That is correct, please call the roll. Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson, yes.
Weisar.
Yes.
Corretz.
Yes.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Yes.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fifteen ayes, this item is adopted as amended.
Okay, Madam Clerk, where are we now?
There have been some verbal motions introduced.
Okay, let's go ahead and take those, I believe there's seven of them?
That is correct.
Okay, let's go ahead and, uh, take the first one.
The first motion was introduced by Councilmember Buscaino and seconded by Councilmember Blumenfeld. This is to be referred to the Budget and Finance Committee and the Public Works Committee. This is regarding requesting the city attorney to prepare an ordinance authorizing violations of the LA Municipal Code fifty-eight point oh-two, to be enforced through the city's ACE program, the Administrative Citation Enforcement Program, with each separate parcel of vacant land with a distinct assessor parcel number, subject to a separate fine, even when a property owner owns multiple parcels of land in a single area, and require fifty percent of the fine revenue to be deposited into the real property trust fund of the council district in which the fine originated. Additionally, it directs the Bureau of Street Services to report on the process by which the Bureau will issue fines.
Okay, next motion?
The next verbal motion is introduced by Councilmember Sadio, and to be referred to the Public Works Committee. This is to approve an exception to the city's one-year street cut moratorium on North Main Street, to allow for the installations of water service and sewer connections at nine sixty and one thousand North Main Street. It requires the permittee to properly repair and resurface the street cut area in accordance with the Bureau of Engineering requirements. A second for this motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blumenfeld, next motion?
The next motion was introduced by Mr. Sadio, and that is to approve an exception to the city's one-year street cut moratorium on Venice Boulevard, to allow for the installation of water service for Loyola High School and nineteen oh-one Venice Boulevard. It also requires the permittee to properly repair and resurface the street cut area in accordance with the Bureau of Engineering requirements.
Are you seconding that?
Second.
And that was Mr. O'Farrell for the secondor? The next motion is introduced by Mr. Sadio, and that's to consider the results of the Tefra public hearing held on March sixteenth, twenty twenty, for Quincy Apartments, and to adopt the Tefra resolution approving the issuance of bonds in an amount not to exceed twenty-one million dollars for the new construction of a fifty-four unit multifamily housing project located at twenty-six fifty-two and twenty-six sixty-two Pico Boulevard in CD One.
Are you seconding that?
Second.
And that was Mr. O'Farrell? The next motion introduced by Mr. Sadio is to consider results of a Tefra public hearing also held on March sixteenth, twenty twenty, for Mariposa Lily, and to adopt the Tefra resolution approving the issuance of bonds in an amount not to exceed sixteen million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the new construction of a forty-one unit multifamily housing project located at ten fifty-five South Mariposa Avenue in CD One.
Second?
Thank you. The next, the next motion is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Rue. This is to be referred to the Rules, Elections and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, and this is to support HR nine oh-eight Meng condemning all forms of anti-Asian sentiment as related to COVID-19, which would recommit U.S. leadership to prioritize language access and inclusivity in communication practices, and two, to combat misinformation and discrimination that put Asian-Americans at risk.
Second.
And finally, the last motion, this was introduced by Councilmember Rue. This is to approve the street banners being coordinated by the Village at Sherman Oaks Business Improvement District as a City of LA Street Banner Program.
Second.
Thank you, that was Mr. Blumenfeld as the secondor.
Okay, what's next, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam President. Council has motions for posting and referral. The motions will be posted on the city clerk's website shortly after the meeting for the public's viewing.
Okay, posting and referrals, members, are there any announcements? Seeing then, we are, we have one announcement, Mr. Rue?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, I make a quick announcement, that I wanted to recognize that yesterday was firefighter appreciation days, appreciation day. Uh, most years, we mark this day with a big presentation, but we can't do it this year, but our firefighters deserve our appreciation now more than ever, um, and not everyone realizes it, but firefighters are also in the front lines of this pandemic, especially when it comes to testing. Um, if you hear the mayor's press conference, they're always out there, uh, at the hard, um, at various, um, um, hot, hotspots, providing testing, but they're also EMTs and first responders, working to keep people safe and transport them to mental health care. And as always, our firefighters are putting themselves in harm's way to keep our city safe, and we are deeply grateful, so I just wanted to recognize firefighter appreciation day.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President, thank you, Mr. Rue. Uh, yes, we are all very grateful for our firefighters and their service, uh, and, uh, particularly wanna shout out to our incredible fire family with the LA City Fire Department. Um, but I also wanted to announce for those listening, I know we have, uh, you know, as the mother of a, of a high school senior, this has been a very difficult time, uh, for a lot of seniors, uh, that were expecting their high school graduations, uh, their proms, all, all their, uh, senior activities, uh, you know, so many of us got to a- You know, so many of us got to enjoy that very special time in, in our life, in our lifetimes, and so, it's with respect to what a lot of the youth are experiencing right now that I want to announce that we're promoting an Adulting 101 webinar with folks from the Campaign for College Opportunity, folks from finance. We've created a suite of webinars to make available to high school students, particularly seniors that are right now unsure about what the next steps are going to look like. We've assembled a number of experts in a variety of fields, and so, that's going to be every Thursday, starting this Thursday, and we want to invite high school seniors, and any high school students, rather, to, to be a part of this program. For many of you, you may or may not know that, in fact, it's funny, you know, adulting is something that we all learned either willfully or unwillingly. But Berkeley had actually also implemented a Adulting 101 class, and so, we are providing that right now for a lot of students that are struggling. So, want to invite everyone to participate in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements, members? Seeing then, Mr. O'Farrell, you have an adjourned motion?
I do, Madam President. Thank you. I'd like to adjourn today's council meeting in the memory of Jose Hugo Rivera Linares. Mr. Rivera Linares was a 68-year-old when he passed, was a lifelong resident from Los Angeles, in the 13th District, ever since he immigrated over from El Salvador in the early 1980s, fleeing the Civil War and seeking an opportunity for a better life for his family, like so many others who have fled war-torn countries or just come to America because of the ideal and the American dream, and we celebrate that as a country of immigrants. And it is in that, in that mindset, in that frame of reference and belief that I'd like to adjourn today's motion, today's meeting in the memory of Mr. Rivera Linares. He was a retired mechanic. He recently found a job as a security guard in several grocery stores to bring in more money for his family. He was a hard worker that never complained and always put his family first. He never thought he would be called an essential worker during the pandemic. Like many, he felt he was not at risk. He was healthy and strong. However, his dedication and pride of wearing a uniform and now as an essential worker is what resulted in him contracting COVID-19. He worked hard even when he first started feeling ill. He tested positive after going to the hospital with respiratory problems and was diagnosed with COVID-19. Mr. Linares is described by his family as youthful and full of life. He took his pain alone and in silence until his last breath on April 24. He fought a long, hard battle at the hospital in his final moments, and unfortunately, like so many others, his family was unable to be with him when he passed. Mr. Linares was an amazing husband, a loving father of five, and a caring grandfather to his continually expanding American family. He always contributed to the Serrano Convalescent Hospital, and he was a dedicated member of the Salvation Army Hollywood Church. As a resident of Hollywood, he always believed he was living the American dream. He would never miss an opportunity to show his dancing skills. He was proud of his city and often invited people to his apartment just to look toward Mount Lee, where the Hollywood sign was visible outside his balcony, just as a reminder of how beautiful his city of Los Angeles was. COVID-19 took a proud father and loyal citizen of Los Angeles. He deserves the best, and we will honor his love and vibrant energy he gave to the City of Angels. May Mr. Jose Hugo Rivera Linares rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Buscaino for an adjourned motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Members, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Christine Tycey, who is the beloved grandmother of my Watts Field Deputy, Eric Washington. Chris, better known as Chris, Christine was born on January 6, 1955, in Hot Springs, Arkansas. Chris attended Langston High School in Arkansas before the family moved to California. After moving to California, Chris attended and graduated from Compton High School. Christine worked many jobs during her lifetime, working hard to support herself and her family. She started to work at a very young age, first at Pacific Bell at the age of 15, then with Bank of America at the age of 18. She was a security bank at the age of 19, and then she went on to work for the Southern California Gas Company and Edison Gas Company. She would go on and find her work with families, the Employment Development Department, where she retired after a successful career of 25 years. And if she wasn't busy enough, Eric tells me, working full-time, supporting a family, Christine attended Los Angeles Southwest College and graduated class of 2002 magna cum laude. Chris married Jerry Washington, who preceded in her, her death, and her mother Dorothy Mae White, father No Trip Tycey Senior, grandson DeShawn Washington, brother Duane Eugene Tycey, and sister Linda Fay Tycey also preceded her death. She leaves behind her son Eric, LeSean Washington, and his children Erica and Eric Junior, her son Derek Rahon McKeefen, and his daughter Autumn, her brother Nor Trip III, sisters Donna and Deborah, a number of great-grandchildren, along with a host of nieces, nephews, and friends. So, our hearts go out to my Watts Field Deputy, Eric Washington, his family, all the Christine's friends and colleagues who are grieving this untimely loss. Christine Tycey, may she rest in peace. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Mr. Bonin, do you have an adjourned motion?
I do. Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I regretfully need to ask us today to adjourn in memory of a former member of the city family, Said Ali. Said, many of you know he worked for several elected officials, including most recently Senator Tony Mendoza, before that Senator Richard Polanco, and Senator and L.A. City Councilman Richard Alacone. He served Councilman Alacone as both a chief deputy and in other positions. He later served as a campaign advisor for several candidates and worked for the Latino Caucus in Sacramento. Said passed away at his home in Mar Vista on April 6. He was born in India during the tumult of the partition after British rule, and he was the oldest son of a family that grew to seven siblings. He came to California to attend UCLA, and that's where he met his future wife, Mary Bray. They had three sons and four grandchildren. After he left the city, I get to serve with him in a different capacity. He was president of, of the West Mar Vista Neighborhood Association and was a very active and engaged community member then. Due to the restrictions around the coronavirus, his family is not and did not prepare a public memorial, but they look forward to an opportunity in the near future to celebrate him and his life with those who loved him. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, members. If you please submit your adjourned motions to the city clerk's office, please, as soon as possible. Seeing no other adjourned motions, our meeting is adjourned. We'll see you tomorrow at 10 o'clock. Thank you.